Make a motion that more members come to, we are having the board meeting.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. I need a motion to approve and adopt the agenda, please.
Some of...
Second?
There's a motion and second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I heard six zero. Building presentation, Dr. Salvo?
Yeah, so we have amazing students and administration here from West Elementary, so I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Sarah Meadows.
Alright, thank you board members for allowing us this opportunity. It's always exciting when our students can engage with you on the front lines as well. So, in a moment, we have four student leaders at West from third grade and fourth grade, and they are going to pitch to you something special, read, listen, and wonder at West Elementary. So we have Carter Hamel in third grade, Vincent Banister, our fourth grader, Ivan Martinez, a fourth grader, and Peyton Pugh, a fourth grader.
At West Elementary, our vision is simple but powerful to create positive connections, meaningful experiences, and academic achievement for every student. But we also know that every child can learn from books in the same way. Some struggle to decode the words, others are writing English, and some just haven't yet found the joy in reading. That's where our next game lesson, which comes in, "What do you want?"
Your books are great books, and books are valuable. They're right inside the trouble. So fix just open the book, press play, and switch. And you know, no wifi, no device is not just set up. It comes to love. We're all those who are tomorrow's children, and we need expressions from learning us, which I'm probably getting into a question, like for us, it's really for the friendship. The readers can clear when they're in both C and weird caps. They're, I'm reading, and it's going to be papers to do with you. For our struggling readers in English, we're... She and boy Daniel, we're friends. For our food, and we're speech about growth, building your vocabulary, listening, comprehension, and expression. For one thing, what do you think, schoolers love them, they choose one of those. They share them, they talk about them, that's a game you need to keep, buy them with any eyes on you.
Last year, we bought forty-five one- books. Kids have made it clear they want more. And we have watched readers become more exciting. Ms. Hunt has checked out more books than this year. Last year, Wildcat checked out five hundred, no, five thousand, six hundred, ninety-nine books. This year, West has seven thousand, six hundred, fourteen books checked out. Kids read, read, are reading more now than ever before.
Our goal now is to expand the collection across grade levels and subjects, so that every student in West has access to his article or digital. So board members, here's our pitch. We need to invest in a program that gives every child access to literature, confidence, and reading, and joy in words. With one of those, we're not just building readers, we're building age. I've won books for reading at West. What do our Wildcats think?
West Elementary, we have stories, but sometimes reading can be tough. The words move fast, but the news applies. One of us help us keep going, and enjoy reading at the same time. When we press play, the story comes along. We can listen all wrong, and hear how fluent reading should sound. It's like having a reading club right in our head. Wonder Books make reading fun and possible for everyone at West. No matter how we learn, they help us grow, they help us believe in ourselves, and they remind us that reading continues in life. With Wonder Books, we're not just readers, we're West Wildcats who love to learn.
So Sharks, what questions?
I've never seen these before, these are really cool.
So we did some research over the summer. We really partnered with our librarian because we've seen the need for reading and the large gaps in deficits that we face, this is a society. And so we sat down and brainstormed with Hamel and I, with her reading interventionist background, and we thought to ourselves, how do we make reading an equitable playing field? So that all students and all families in our community can enjoy the love of literacy. So Ms. Hamel, I researched, what were other schools doing around us? And they were really starting to build their audio book library. So Ms. Hamel really came in with the research that supported that. And I used my sense of partnering with other school districts to see what is the best resource for students? You know, how much do they cost? What if they break them? How do we roll this out? How do we make this equitable for our community? And Ms. Hunt really took the lead on that. So, we decided to see if those audio books would increase the circulation, but also, how do you have a balance, right? Because we know, and research suggests, not just listening to a book, but also, you have to authentically read books as well. And so, we surveyed our students, and right now, they're only offered to third grade and fourth grade students. But, in June, we're coming back for more money for our library. So, the audio books are fantastic addition. I will even tell you, Ms. Hamel was so excited to celebrate. There was a little situation on a bus where two students were engaging some behaviors that they should not have been engaging in, and there was a student who normally would have turned around and engaged those behaviors. He was so enthralled in the audio book. He had no idea what was going on. It was incredible. And so I even asked them, like, how do you, do you always read audio books?
No.
No, why not?
Um, because, uh, mostly, you still wanna get practice in reading, but you also just wanna take a break sometimes, and your teacher probably won't let you sometimes.
So we really encourage them to just kind of enjoy for reading, right? Like, if we can just hook you and enjoy reading, then our hope is that you will naturally start to pick up different varieties of books that we have in our library. Our circulation has already increased, you know, we're already up over two thousand book checkouts. And so, the students do a really good job of saying, you know, I've already had two audio books, and so now I'm gonna read another graphic book or nonfiction book. They do a really good job of maintaining a balance. But I think the most powerful thing for me is the opportunities that it presents to our communities, knowing that there are some people in society who are illiterate, and this allows them to connect as a family. You can literally just push coming, and it'll read to the whole feeling at a storytime. The comprehension questions that are in there are spectacular, because that's also an area where students struggle, is comprehension. And Ivan, I think we talked about that, right? The first time he was reading, he was like, why are they asking me questions? Well, that's part of the reading process, so that's why. But feel free to ask them any questions. I did tell them that you may have a couple of questions for them, but yeah, feel free to listen to them.
What's your favorite book that you've listened to so far?
Um, Miss Nickel is like... Mine is like this horse in the spacecraft?
Yeah, yeah.
Mine is ABC Mysteries, because they have like little letters in them. So, on that end of the book, you can make a...
My favorite is Pat, the end of everything.
Ms. Hunt does a wonderful job. She has these, they go home in individual little Ziploc baggies. They're really hard to destroy, they really truly are, and they're very reasonably priced as well. Students do have to have parents opt in if they wanna check them out, because they do cost a little bit more to replace, but they're really durable. So, thank you for continuing to invest in us, yes, Ms. Meadows.
So, I noticed here that, does this read along in Spanish and English?
That's correct.
So, do the kids, could this be used to teach your kids Spanish, you think?
It absolutely could. We have some students who speak multiple dialects, and so it's actually been really interesting where they can understand some of the words, but not all of them, because they don't always transfer over. But absolutely, and that's one of the biggest things that Ms. Hamel and I tried to expand in our literature collection was an equitable access to literature. It's not there. Even some of our district assessments, it's hard to get it translated, so it's not equitable. And so, for us, that was very important in our community, to really reflect equitability and to be able to see what our students truly know, to take away that barrier.
Thank you.
Welcome. Well, thank you.
Thank you guys. Great job presenting, guys.
Yeah.
On the board, if you guys wanna grab your books behind them and pull up your books?
You got the A to Z mystery book.
I asked a good admirer.
Yep, there we go. And lastly, um, you know, we, oh, thank you guys, you come over here actually, because we're getting ready to honor someone that you guys know and love, and they are truly a member of our community. We have an edgy staff substitute who always, 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 always shows up to fill a need and to fill a role. And we had a student who transferred in that needed a consistent individual in order to be successful. And this wonderful lady is Donna Hale, if you wanna come on up. She showed up and she said, "I understand the needs for substitutes, and I understand the need for consistency for students to be successful." And she did that, but that's actually not why, why we are honoring her. We are honoring her because ironically enough, we were sitting in the cafeteria, and she's sitting with her student, just kind of doing her thing, and Ms. Hamel's here, and I'm here, Ms. Smith's here, and I look over, and the student is choking. And he's going like this, and I go to walk over, and Ms. Hale had already performed the hind leg, ejecting the chip from the child's throat. And so, it was your quick response and your heroic action with truly every student, every day. And I always think of Dr. Salvo being for this year's together weekend, right? And I truly believe that, because without you, in that moment, it would have looked a lot differently. So, thank you for being a part of our community. And when I talked to you the other day, you said, this was so just humbling to hear, "I think I found my village at West." And so that means a lot. So just from administration to substitute, please know that that means a lot, that you feel welcome in our community. So, thank you, and I give your action.
Um, I went here two years ago and didn't know anybody. Didn't have a community or a purpose, and kept driving by the road, and we'd see the little substitute teachers needed. Okay, and so I called my student, Amy Staff, and she helped me, you know, through the steps to get a certified substitute. And, um, you know, it took a little bit, but once, I was at the elementary schools, one of the elementary schools, and I told Ms. Meadows, and Ms. Hamel, I said, "I, I think I've found my purpose, and I've found my people." And, um, but, you know, I, I didn't do anything that anybody else wouldn't have done.
No, you didn't.
What us people cannot think in that moment.
But it takes a village to raise a child, so I always love it. And I appreciate all the help from both elementary schools that I work at for the support and putting up with me, because I do help a lot. So, anyway, so I do appreciate it. I'm really excited about the library books too, because I was able to witness those. And as a person who does have a first edition Winnie the Pooh book, I can guarantee that these will make a difference in these kids' lives, so. Any help that they can do, it's really appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Meadows, on the side.
Think you got this fresh haircut. You smile, and I like it.
Thank you for everything you do for us, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Alright, next time on the agenda is the MSBA board report. Does anybody have anything they wanna bring up the MSBA, or anything else?
I will just say, if you watched it closely, you see Mary in the video. You're a celebrity, Mary.
Okay, next time on the agenda is public comments, and you said nobody signed up?
Could I sign up now, if I had a chance to make a public comment?
Is it on the agenda item?
Um, it is not, no, it's regarding the situation in Wright City, East.
Uh, let's, let's not do that now, because it would say, it would be a closed session item.
Okay.
So, what I recommend that you do is reach out to Dr. Salvo, and then go that route, and if you need to come to the board afterwards, then do that, please.
Sounds good, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is academic achievement. Dr. Barbara Yates?
Alright, um, tonight, we're gonna go over how our students performed last year on the Math and EOC assessments, as well as last year's district APR, and then our current composite APR. And I know you've all met him before, but I want to reintroduce Dr. Brian Duffy. He is in the back here tonight. And I asked him to be here, as well as he's really been boots on the ground with me digging into the data. So he's just here to support any data questions that might come up tonight as we go through. Next slide, please. Perfect. Here, we're just providing you with an overview of the assessment and APR timeline. Of note, July is when we were able to provide our building admin with Math and EOC results for their planning purposes. August, we began to provide it to teachers. And then, our APR came out in October, and as you know, just recently, on November sixth, that's when the embargo was lifted. So we're gonna jump right into first, how our students performed on the Math and EOC assessments last full year. Here, you can see how we performed on the ELA map test. You can also see our Wright City percentage of proficient and proficient and advanced for each grade level on the right, next to the state average. So that is our ELA. The next slide shows how we performed on the math map tests. You can also see on the right side, our Wright City percentage of proficient and advanced for each grade level, third through eighth, as well as next to it, the state average, for comparison. On this slide, you can see how we performed on the science map test. You can also, again, see our percentage of proficient and advanced for fifth and eighth grade, as those are the only two that take the science map assessment, as well as the state average. For EOCs, here you can see how we performed on the EOC test, and you can also see our percentage of proficient and advanced for each grade level, as well as the state average for comparison. APR by building, I wanted to start by breaking it down by each building before we get into the district APR. So this slide, we are very happy with East APR. As a reminder, East APR is only based on the kindergarten assessment, that everybody took it, and then attendance. And for the first time as a building, East received attendance points, which is awesome. And their APR increased from last year. Last year's APR East as a building was seventy-five, so they had quite an increase to eighty-seven point five, and really, it's a tribute, a tribute attendance work that they did. Next slide, West. West, we are also extremely happy with West Building APR. You can see the breakdown here, but I also just wanna celebrate that they also, for the first time, received attendance points. Their building APR increased by twenty-seven point two percent from last year. This is amazing growth, and definitely deserves to be celebrated. And the middle school, so here you can see the middle school's APR. They did receive all points for the I-CAP. They did not, unfortunately, they did not receive any points for attendance. Overall, the middle school building APR did decrease last year. Next slide, high school. Here you can see the high school's APR. They did receive all points for advanced credit, graduation rate, and graduation follow-up. They did not receive any points for attendance, and they received half of the points for CCR assessments. Overall, the high school building APR decreased last year. Reviewing the annual performance report, so now we're gonna take a look at the district's APR for last year. Thank you, Elizabeth. So this is just an overview of how we receive our points. So, the 2025 APR includes two hundred total points. Seventy percent of those points are earned from performance. And you can see laid out there what that includes. So, our Map and EOC achievement, as well as the success-ready portion, which is our CCR and advanced credit at the high school, our grad rate and grad follow-up. And then thirty percent of those points are earned through continuous improvement. And that shows you the breakdown of that thirty percent of points, and we'll, we'll dig in a little bit more. So, we're gonna dive right in and show that our district APR from last year is sixty-nine point seven percent. Next slide, please. This slide shows, so twenty-four percent of the APR score is based on student achievement status. So exactly how they did on the Map and EOC. So here you can see a breakdown of how Wright City students performed on Map EOC and EOC combined in ELA, math, science, and social studies. And of note, the only social studies score is from the government EOC. We don't give social studies map tests. Next slide. Um, this is a breakdown of the growth point. So twenty-four percent of our APR score is based on student achievement growth. As a reminder, we, we talked about this last year, but this growth calculation is based on a formula that the state uses to project, basically, in a nutshell, what our improvement should be by their calculation in an area compared to how we actually performed. And this is based on the Missouri growth model. Next slide. And then twenty-two percent of the APR score is based on the success-ready student metrics, along with graduation rate and grad follow-up. So, the CCR assessments that we received, fifty percent of our points from. How we get those points is, did all of our students take an assessment, such as ACT, new work keys, ad-sab, and then also how they score on the assessment? So I know the high school's been working hard to make sure that we are appropriately matching students to the correct assessment for the achievement part of that. I wanna just point out and celebrate from the thirty percent of our APR score that's based on continuous improvement metrics, that we really knocked this out of the park. We got one hundred percent in everything that, that is part of this, except we only got fifty percent of our attendance, but at the same time, we've never received points for attendance before. So, yes, we, we got fifty percent out of a hundred, but we've never gotten points there before. So that's still something really to celebrate. Now we're going to take a look at our, what our composite score is. Next slide, please. The composite score is important because it's how we get our classification from the state. So this year's report will feature a composite score report based on data from twenty- So this year's report will feature a composite score report based on data from '23, '24, and '25. So it's a score that represents three years of averaged APR data. And on the slide that's showing right now, it's important to note that this year, district classifications can only go up. So ours would not have gone down anyways, but it's just important to note that this year, they can only go up. Next year would be the first year that a district's classification with the state could go down. There are four classifications. Accredited with distinction is if your APR is like, I think it's 95% and above. 70% and up is accredited. I think it's 51 to 69% is provisionally accredited, and 50 and below is unaccredited. Next slide, please. So this year, our composite score is 78.8, and our composite score classification is accredited. So now we're going to look at some comparisons for composites, if you want to pull up. Thank you. So as a reminder, the composite is the score we get our classification from. And as you can see, compared to our, on the left side, our area schools, we fall kind of right bottom middle compared to the area districts. And then on the right, compared to our EMO conference, we are third in composite score. Next slide. I already mentioned some of the celebrations. I didn't mention all of them, so I just want to point out some more. Again, East and West APR increased from last year, which is awesome. West APR increased by 27.2% from last year. We received attendance points for the first time. We scored above the state average in fourth grade ELA, eighth grade ELA, third grade math, fourth grade math, eighth grade math, and eighth grade science. We received 100% of points possible for graduation rate, graduation follow-up, and advanced credit. We received 100% of points possible for our improvement plan, response to standards, climate and culture survey, KEA, which is our kindergarten assessment, ICAPS, and all of the documentation that we have to submit as part of them. Our composite score continues to hold strong at an accredited classification. So we're going to go right into, there are lots of things to celebrate, but we also know we still have lots of great work to do. So we're going to go in now and talk about some action steps.
Yeah, so we're very excited. We just want to, you know, share with our community and you guys things that we have put in place that went into effect a lot of this. And we'll say, like, even before we got our map test scores, things that we are doing actively to work with our community, support our buildings, and increase our scores. But I just want to say publicly, our kids are our kids, and they are more than a score. However, I wanted to go through, and we wanted to go through and share all of the great things and work we're doing publicly that was put into place prior to even receiving these scores. So we started off the year this year with a brand-new teacher evaluation model. So that went into effect at the beginning of this school year. And what I'm very happy and proud to say is it's a research-based evaluation model. So it was actually put together, to give you a little history, with a retired previous educator, and put together with an associate dean for research out of MU College of Education. So it's very much research-based, and it's about growth. And it also, I don't like to use force, but it encourages our building leaders to be in buildings and classrooms more. So they have to do more evaluations in a classroom, and it's all about providing our teachers feedback. And then what it does for us is that we can actually target and look at what areas we specifically need improvement on, and then we can work with our professional development committee to be targeted in the areas that we're providing professional development. So to me, it's not just throwing, you know, darts. It's actually throwing the right dart in the right area. And it's about supporting our teachers. It's about supporting our buildings in the areas in which we need. Because our students, we get new students a lot, and students come in and out. So this actually helps us target very specifically what we need. Next slide, please. We talked a lot today about attendance, and what I wanted to say is this actually went into play in the middle of last school year, and it worked. We can see when you do very targeted work, we talk about being proactive. It's all about action on what we're doing. And we saw the benefits of that. So this is our first year that we were actually starting our year with this attendance pyramid in place. So when we think about that, there's a positive correlation between attendance and academic performance. So we talk about multi-tiered systems of support for academics. This is a multi-tiered system of support with strategic action steps in regards to attendance. And that was in play at the beginning of this school year, and that actually started kind of at the middle of last school year. Next slide, please. The other thing that, again, we kind of put into place, Holly and I coming on towards the middle of last school year, so we're starting it at the beginning of this school year, is really working on school safety and culture piece, because we know that that's also related to making our students feel comfortable and to supporting our buildings. So we now have a systematic strategy in place. So we implemented a threat assessment, and that helps us to identify and evaluate threats in a systematic manner, and then provide safety planning and supports for any students in need. So it's very strategic. It's very targeted. And then we know at the district level that it's being systematic across the district. So it's the same in every building. We also invited the Megan Meyer Foundation to try to be proactive on addressing bullying. So we had that at the middle school and high school. We did full school assemblies. Then they did breakout sessions with students, and then we even offered a parent component in the evening, which kind of goes along with our theme of the year, "Together We Can." We always say, "We can't fix what we don't know, and we want to partner with you." So we brought the Megan Meyer Foundation in to offer that to our families. Next slide, please. We also, so it started this school year, so thank you to the board for the support. But we also very strategically added positions to begin this school year. So we added an additional reading interventionist at the middle school level, so we were able to start the year off with that. An additional ESL specialist that split between middle school, high school. We added an elementary PE teacher, so now both elementary schools have their own PE teacher, and I'll talk about that in a second. And then also, for the first time, we actually added an interventionist to our summer school to help those students that attend our summer school to continue those interventions. So these were things that I just want to share, like, that we have put into place, the action that we have done to help and support our students learn and grow. But in regards to the physical education teacher, we all know if we have kids or great kids, our young students need to move, and PE can be correlated to better academic achievement and helping better focus and improve overall mood. And I was talking to Sarah today, and she said that they've already seen an improvement with their kiddos. Just making sure that our elementary kiddos have the right amount of movement in that opportunity. So we are very proud that we put that into place at the start of this school year. The other thing that was a change and that was starting, you know, so it was ready to go at the beginning of this school year, is increased support for our new teachers. And that's multifaceted, because as we know, across the nation, it's not just here. It's not just Missouri. It is literally across the United States. I won't speak to other countries. Haven't done that research, but I could assume. There is a teacher-wide shortage. And what we really want to do, even like I said with me, with our new teacher evaluation program, with the beginning teacher assistance, we really want to support our teachers. We want to make sure they have everything that they need to be successful, then to help our students grow. So that is something else that was put into place at the beginning of the year. And it's really about increased collaboration between the mentor and mentee. There's now a handbook to kind of give them some guidance on that. And then there's also quarterly check-ins with our teachers. And again, that's to also support our teachers and also retain, because we need to keep the teachers that we have. So now I'll turn the next part over to Dr. Broadway Yates.
So we've done a lot of assessment work as well. As you know, if I think it recently came to you, we updated our district's assessment plan to really be permissible in how we're assessing students and how we're using the information we get from those assessments. We did make a move from Ames Web to Renaissance at the district level, and I will talk more about that and the why behind it here in just a minute. We have offered this year some evaluate training. We've offered it in afternoons on PD days for teachers, and even today, I believe, for our building admin, making sure that we best understand the tool that we're using and what we're doing with that information. As you've heard me talk about before, at West and Middle School, we have implemented the MAP testlets. If you recall, I've mentioned before in my talking with the head of assessment and data at DESI, he has said, "If you want to move the needle on your Map and EOCs, use our testlets that we're putting out." So they came out mid-year with the MAP ones, and actually, the EOC testlets are supposed to be released the 24th of this month. So we're excited to be able to use those at the high school level. We added or changed a preschool assessment to better align with what East is using. And then, as you guys have heard and seen in the monthly CSET report, Dr. Fageroff has brought power sets to the high school. Also, our curriculum cycle. So we have now a systematic process for reviewing, rewriting, and implementing our curriculum. This work was done at the district level, and it also provides a process for adopting resources to teach the curriculum, which is something that is pretty new to us here. It works to align to the Missouri learning standards. And just for your information, this year, our science curriculum team is working with Missouri Curriculum and Associates to dive into their curriculum and rewrite it. And then we also, along the lines of science, we did have Missouri S&amp;T come and visit West and do some awesome STEM work. Our library science department will be needing later this year as it's their turn in the cycle to review their curriculum as well. Professional development. We also have a professional development plan, which is in the professional development handbook. And we have worked really hard to make sure that we are offering professional development to our staff according to need and to also teacher voice. And so you've heard me talk about really pushing out surveys to get their feedback after every professional development opportunity, but also just asking, "What do you need?" And that's part of what, too, Amy spoke to earlier, the work that we're doing to support our new teachers. As the PDC is checking in with our year-one teachers quarterly, and I'm checking in personally with our year-two teachers, one of the things we're asking is, "What do you still feel like you need support in? What do you feel like you need more training or professional development in?" We're making sure that what we're doing connects to our CSET. And as you've also heard me say, this year, we have a huge focus on PLC. But really, PLC encompasses everything. It encompasses our curriculum, our assessment, our intervention, our enrichment. Next slide. Speaking of PLC focus, we have partnered with Solution Tree this year for our four professional development days, and you can see some of the focuses that we have had and will continue to have this year. We've also started having a little bit more of a focus on our administrator and impact team leader work, where our PLC is concerned. And our administrator team is currently doing a book study. You can see it there, learning by doing as a part of that work to make sure that we, as leaders, are guiding the process effectively. I mentioned earlier that we moved from Ames Web to Renaissance. We did that last year. Ames Web was not one of the state-approved assessments, and Renaissance is. So we made the move as a district to Renaissance. We now, last year, we started using Star Reading and Math at the elementary level. This year, we've added Star Reading and Math, so now we have it completely K8 at this point, so that we have good, quality, consistent data that we're using. It guides our intervention and success plans for reading, and we have had some ongoing training and support through Renaissance for our staff for that. The Missouri Reading Initiative, this is something that we brought into the middle school this year. So this work started with our ELA team, grades five through eight, this July. The MRI, or the Missouri Reading Initiative, is something that was organized under the direction of DESI back in the late '90s, actually. And what it does is it provides ongoing systematic professional learning to enhance our literacy instruction. And what that looks like is, they actually come in twice a month. One day is spent offering professional development to our ELA teachers, and then the very next day, they're in the classrooms with our ELA teachers, providing onsite coaching and modeling of lessons. And that's been a very positive experience. Aspire in letters. So all of our elementary classroom special education administrators and reading interventionists are either letters-trained, or they are receiving training right now. And something new this year, last year, the state piloted Aspire, which is the secondary version of the science of reading, of letters. And so this year, Taylor and the reading interventionist team at the middle school are going through Aspire training as well. Some of you may have heard, we have a literacy committee that we put together this year. As part of the MSEP requirements, we have to have a comprehensive literacy plan, but it's something that's good practice anyway. But we wanted it to be meaningful. We didn't want it to just be something that I write for the district or our admin team writes for the district. So we put together a committee. And what this is, is it's, as you can see, a strategic, evidence-based approach to improving our reading, writing, speaking, and listening skills for all students. So from early childhood through high school. And what I love about this, too, is there is an opportunity for community and parent involvement. So we have sent out surveys. We've surveyed our parents on what they feel, you know, how they feel about how our current approach to literacy is. We surveyed our students and our teachers. And so I'm very excited for the work of the literacy committee. I'm extremely excited about Benchmark. You're probably tired of hearing me talk about it, but we were able to implement Benchmark K6 this year. It is a research-based, DESI-approved curriculum for ELA that has ongoing professional development. They're actually coming back here in a couple of weeks to work with our Benchmark implementation team. So we have a teacher from every grade level implementing the new resource, as well as administration. That implementation team has helped me to monitor. Implementation has brought back feedback, helped us meet needs as they come up. And so that team is getting another training here in a couple of weeks, and then we will use the Train the Trader model. They'll take that back to their teams. We have been collaborating with Lincoln County Schools. So they implemented, I think this is their, it's either their third or fifth year implementing Benchmark. And so our teams have been able to go, observe them in the classrooms, collaborate with their teams, and ask questions there, too, which has been a very positive experience. One of the things that you probably remember from last year when I brought this to you is I was excited also about the cross-curricular component. Benchmark does teach quite a few of our science standards as well through the ELA resource. There's an ESL component that Dr. Duffy worked with our ESOL specialists this year to take a look at before we jumped in and purchased it. And it was something that worked very well for them. So we ended up purchasing the EL component as well to go along with. And then just, I'm so excited about the high-river reading and writing instruction that's going on. And if you go to the next slide, Elizabeth, I just wanted to share with you some pictures. Our kids are reading and writing so much right now. And our building admin, they're good at sending me pictures, because they know it makes my day. And so I think it's just, it just shows what our kids can do, and it's just amazing to see. It's amazing to walk in the classrooms and see all that they're doing this year. It's amazing to walk in the classrooms and see all that they're doing this year um through Benchmark.
Hey Holly, can I ask a question? The pictures, the workbooks that we see there, is that part of the Benchmark herself? That's a resource available with that?
Yeah. Yes. Um, and then I wanted to to talk about math. So um we are currently looking at a research-based math resource for middle school um that we will um be bringing to you here in the very near future. Um, it has increased rigor in the teaching of the standards. Um, our hope is to look at this for middle school for next year and then bring on elementary and high school later. Um, we also, some work that we've done in math is, um, we worked with Step Up Consulting last year on our math curriculum to make sure that it aligned with the standards. That's still a work in progress, honestly, even though we have our curriculum cycle, that work is ongoing all the time to make sure that our curriculum is aligned. Um, we also um this year have sent or are sending um some of our high school math teachers to the Missouri Council of Teachers of Math Conference. Um, and uh um just lots of good things coming in math as well, trying to support in that area. And I think that's the last slide.
Is Heidi still with us? Heidi, do you have questions?
Um, I have some questions, but a lot of them were actually answered today in the board questions, and I appreciate everything that was just presented regarding our plans. But I will let everyone else ask their questions because I feel like you guys are going to ask them.
Kyle, I'll let you go first.
Me.
Yeah.
Uh, Holly and Amy, thank you so much for the um the detailed presentations, uh, the summary of the APR and uh the plan for this year. Uh, the the list of things have already been implemented since the end of the year. Uh, do have a couple of questions, so I want to start with the APR. Um, one one thing that stuck out to me is at the high school CCR, five to 10 points. Um, I just liked here a little bit more of what we're doing to address um getting the students to take the correct assessment and buy into that to to capture those points this year.
So that's a great question. Um, so what um Jason and I, our conversations and moving the high school counselors in is, um, one thing that we've done is last year, we we knew that, we we got the same points last year in this area. And so um we were able to write and receive a grant to pay for more of our students to take the Work Keys test because um it was determined at the high school last year that that would be more appropriate for some of our students um than the ACT or just having everybody take the AT-SAT. Um, we did, I did write, and we did actually receive or we were approved for the same grant this year, but then with um the state of things in the government, um that um that money was um not distributed to us. So in working with Veronica, talking about how can we still do that? How can we still pay for that? Um, Jason and I frequently are talking about this. Do you want to speak from the high school's perspective, what's happening there to ensure that we're appropriately matching?
Sure. Uh, just one thing, like real quick, um, talking with my admin counseling team about and kind of correlation, just a simple little twist we might make or adjustment, I should say, is just the timing of when we give some of these tests. And so giving it uh like early junior year um for a baseline for some of the kids, we can see where we're at, and then that gives us two full years from there to then further uh match them with another test that they could take, whether that's ACT or Work Keys. Um, but uh, so that's one adjustment that it's it's small, but could have a massive difference uh just by moving that test and even having me floating ideas out there of like a test day and uh to moving that uh in the beginning of the year. So that's one adjustment. But we looked, uh, we look, we've looked line by line at every single kid, and we are, we are on it, and I'm very confident that we will continue to match it, and we need the kids to perform. Um, because pretty much all the kids are taking it, and but then you have to reach certain standards to get all, capture all those points. So, but just one little thing is, that could be a massive change is the timing of that test to give us a little bit more time to prepare kids for the other tests. Um, so.
Something else that's helpful with that too is, so they could take more than one type of assessment, and we get the points from whichever one they achieve higher. And so what they consider is whichever one they achieve higher. So if they're assessing them earlier, they're able to track that and see, you know, they really didn't, you know, they didn't do great on this, let's maybe have them do this other one. So it allows for that.
Thank you.
Anything else, Kyle?
Yeah, the the only other thing, uh, there was so much good information shared in the action steps. I just, I know, um, it was it was a challenging year, and I just want to reiterate, anything, whatever resource that we need to, um, you know, grow from that challenging year, just, we want to, I I want to hear it. I want to hear it.
Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate that. Um, I, we share a lot of the action steps in there for math, um, but one of the biggest things that I think will help contribute, which isn't right now, um, but we are working towards, which we will be coming to the board for approval, um, probably in January, um, potentially December, but no later than January, is approval of a district-wide resource for math like we did for ELA. Because when you have a district resource for a grade span, it eliminates a variable. So it prompts us to be more targeted and strategic with the work. Um, and when I went back there and looked at previous teacher survey data, one of the things they wanted was a district-approved resource. So I feel like that's a win-win and might be able to also help us retain um teachers. So that's one thing is support when we come to approve the district-wide resource, which Carnegie I'm familiar with. Um, when I was at Troy and in my previous life as a previous middle school principal, we rolled out that new curriculum. So I was there from start when we rolled it out, and I saw the difference it made um with the rigor in the classroom. So I'm excited about that. The other thing we're investigating and looking into um is a math coach or a math interventionist. When you look um on the previous APR composite, when we looked at the the Zouwaltz and the Fort Zouwaltz, or I'm sorry, the Fort Zouwaltz and the Francis Howell, um, one of the things that you'll notice, if you really dig in to the resources that those districts have, most districts um have in those bigger air, larger areas, and even Troy, they have math interventionists, math coach, English interventionists, English coaches. So that's something that we're already talking staffing-wise, I'm looking at Veronica. Um, we're looking and talking about money. I really feel like that's a resource that we need to bring um into the district. So that'll be something that we'll be asking for when we look at staffing for the next school year. I really feel like that will be a powerful thing to support our teachers and ultimately our students in the classroom. And again, when you look at our neighboring districts, they have those resources. And I always say, I don't want zip code to dictate the resources that our students have. So that will be something that I will be requesting. In the interim, until we get to that next fiscal year of hiring, because people are under contract now, we have reached out um like to Ed Plus. They used to have math coaches that we could utilize and that we were supposed to get, but unfortunately with funding that got cut um at Ed Plus. However, I've hunted down some um math interventionists that Ed Plus used to have and have spoken to one that hasn't been hired by a neighboring district of math coaches, and they may be willing, I should be meeting with them, um, if not next week before Thanksgiving, the week after. And we are hoping that we can come to an agreement and possibly bring them on as early as January to go in and help um our math um teachers. So that could be something that could potentially happen even this school year, um, which I'm really, really excited about. And that literally happened today, and I'm looking at her, I'm like surprised, I haven't even had a chance to tell her yet, but um it was a busy day today. Um, I was finally able to touch base with her and get the phone number from Ed Plus. So there's a lot of things we have in the works that I'm really excited about. Um, and I was just happy that we were able to provide the update of everything we've already put into place at the start of this school year.
Thank you. So I got, Mary, do you have anything?
Um, I just wanted to ask one question. Uh, with the middle school, is, do you think that the changing of the way we our grading system has had anything to do with some of our scores there? It, you know, because we we changed that last year midway, so I just was curious whether that has had anything to do with.
I'm looking at Taylor, shake her head. So I will say, when I came aboard last year, um, the first thing you do is you listen, and you listen to stakeholders, and you listen to your teachers. And I had those superintendent chats even with students. And what I found um is they didn't really understand the grading system. Um, so we did stop it as of January. Um, so I do think that could have an impact, but I will let Taylor um speak to that more.
Um, one of the things that I really am trying to do is that increase the communication with families. Um, I send out a a weekly newsletter every week to my families. Um, and so just increasing that communication, I think also helps keep them connected with our building. But one thing that I found with when we were evidence-based grading is parents didn't know how to communicate um with their kids about their grades and next steps. So when we took it back to the traditional grading scale, which our community understood, parents are now able to go back to having um fruitful conversations with their kiddos and having the same language with between them, their kids, and the same language with the kids, the teachers, and the families. I did have bridge to communication gap that I do think um ultimately that gap caused some, some, yeah, our scores to be what they were, and I'm hoping, not hoping, that's not true, but we are rebuilding that bridge with families, and I'm having more communication and positive conversations about student growth with families issue.
Any other questions, Mary?
Um, half is done.
Dave? I don't have any. Beth?
Uh, my question was about the math interventionist. I thought I had seen that somewhere, maybe it was a board question. So, um, so for the reading interventions, we have two, two resources, right? Both of those are middle school, right?
We do it in the school.
Yes, okay. Um, and so the intention would be to have the math person at middle school as well.
So um I want to make sure I I clarify. So what we're talking about potentially for January, I got to get them to agree. We're working on it. Um, is to potentially for this year in the interim is to start them to at least provide some support and help Taylor go into classrooms if they need and co-teach with them and really dig in deep. Um, that potentially could begin as early as January. It would be one individual um who then could also help us potentially roll out and support our teachers when the new curriculum starts next year. So that's one thing. But then when we look at staffing for the next school year, like someone that would be an employee, you know, a full-time employee, that would begin next school year, because that's when a contract for our school year would start. Would we keep this consultant on? Potentially, it depends on what that looks like, but I think we need a person that's an employee of our district. Like we have a reading interventionist, I feel we need a math interventionist. Um, and we'll see what the budget looks like, but that to me would be a priority to bring, again, that support for our students and our faculty. All right, thank you. I just want to say thank you so much for everything that you put into the data for the action steps. That was so helpful. We appreciate it.
Yeah, I, my question, I look forward to how I'm going to pay for it. So, but yeah, but I I echo what Kyle said, you know, we need to, you know, educating kids, so we need to put our resources there, so.
Erin?
Invest.
Mary, research.
Investment, thank you.
I just had a a question, and I'm trying to figure out, and I'm wondering if maybe it's because of the how things are weighted, but um for for the high school, and um I was just kind of going over last year's um APR breakdown versus this year's, and it looks like in total, there's four points difference for like the academics. So is it because student groups are weighted differently or CCR? Because it seems like there's a big change for like not much point difference.
I'm going to let our data guru here.
Data guru.
So, huh. I would have to look at last year's information to kind of do that analysis before I would be able to give that answer. Um, but I can take a look at that and be happy to email.
And I apologize for the the late question. Um, it's just kind of, yeah, caught me off because I know like the CCR has to do with that and attendance, all of the things. Um, but then I was just kind of adding up like the the actual points on the APR chart, and there's only a, like I said, a a difference of of four.
Um, and I, I might be wrong. So what we can do is we can look at it and put it in the board update, but I think too, there might be different points each year.
Yeah.
But we'll verify that and we'll, we'll get that.
Yeah. And I know that the point structure and that thing is all kinds of awkward and how everything is weighted and.
The student group.
Yeah.
Also could, can change. Um, and then there's the growth.
Right.
But we'll do some digging and we'll, we'll see what we can find comparable.
Yeah, DESI loves to not hold standards for more than a few years.
Correct, yeah. Yes, yeah.
And I will say there's also a workgroup right now, working on and looking at the growth model of potentially looking at that. So sometimes it's a little bit of a moving target, but that's okay. I say everybody is in the same boat, and we just keep doing what's best for kids.
Right.
And as long as we put our kids first, and we do what's best for kids, we're doing the right thing.
Thank you.
Anything else, Erin?
Uh, no, I I appreciate all the um work that you guys have already done, um, just to keep moving kids forward.
All right, and then before we get to Heidi one last time, um, next Monday, there's a uh an APR conversation happening at Ed Plus, I'm going to. If you have any questions you want me to ask, um, go ahead and uh send them to me, and I'll I'll try to get a master from down there. Heidi, um, any final thoughts?
No, I don't have any final thoughts, except you just saying that. I think we hit just a couple of questions there, so I will be sending you a couple, you know, just regarding how they are figuring these things. But uh, yeah, I would like to see that data a little bit deeper, and I appreciate you guys yet again for all the planning that you're already doing to increase these.
Okay. So uh, when I wrap this item up and move to next agenda item, so the next agenda item is a travel reimbursement for myself.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion and second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Aye. Uh, six zero one. The next item on the agenda is a travel reimbursement for Mary Graeber.
I'm a.
Second.
Motion and second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Motion carried, six zero one. Uh, and now the next item on the agenda is uh the budget amendment number one for FY26.
Veronica, she was up and ready. Oh, good evening. Uh, you know, when we write the budget in June, it is based on assumptions, so as we progress through the year, we get more information. So we are here today with a little bit more information and a need for budget amendment one. As you can see, our revenues um went up about 1.8 million dollars. A majority of that, 1.3 million of that was in debt service um due to our assessed valuation and our approved tax rate. That has no um, uh, no impact on our operation budget. Excellent. Our expenses went up about 90,000. Um, some contributions to that were summer school expenses were finalized. We had some bond fees for Proposition G, and then we had a change order at the greenhouse, for the greenhouse. Overall, when you look at the budget, we got revenues at 36.8 million, expenses at 36 million, or a roughly a difference of 750,000. When just looking at operations, that's the incidental in the teacher's fund. Um, we have a surplus of 24,193.56. When you look at our fund balance, when we estimated in June, we had that right at about, right at 25%. Now, after budget amendment one, we have it projected at 24.19%. That is still um at the board's reserve goal of 22%. Any questions about the budget amendment?
Any questions? Heidi?
No, sir.
Beth?
No.
Dave? Mary?
No.
No.
Kyle?
Yeah, so uh, Veronica, I'm sorry, I, I had a typo in my question that I submitted. So when we look at Fund Three debt, our revenue is going up a bit, but our expenses for Fund Three are not going up. So my question is, we're receiving additional funds because of the debt levy, why are we not paying down our debt with those additional funds?
So I have had a call with our advisor, Red President, um, and we are in conversations about if we should move that levy back to operations for the next school year or if we should um, pay down that debt a little sooner. So there, there could be updates in the next budget amendment on our expenses.
I thought we couldn't move monies from debt to operations and that's more of a question to you, Austin, or Veronica, if you know.
I do know because I have talked to him. He said um, we would have to go to the public.
Yeah.
And ask them. So we would have to call it by January. Um, so that's why those conversations are starting to take place now.
Okay. Good to know.
I do not have any questions, I just.
Okay, now that, anybody else before we move on to the next uh, we get in a motion to approve?
The move, second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the FY twenty-sixth budget as presented. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda?
Veronica.
Thank you, Veronica. Next item on the agenda is the CSIP reports. Uh, we'll just go through these one at a time. Everybody has any questions? So early childhood and PAT, any questions?
Just want to say the, the um, contact numbers with PAT continue to go up. The, the sooner we can get in contact with families and, and the, the young kiddos, better for their academic career.
Thanks for the pumpkins, Micus.
Thank you. West, any uh, questions on that one? East, any questions? Central office attendance and enrollment.
Just something to, that I've, that I've noticed. So we, going back to the previous report, the action plan, everything they've implemented since the beginning of the year. When they talked about attendance, they implemented the pyramid last year. And at least for me, the data truly is showing an improvement. When you look at the individual building scores and what our goals and them wanting to get ADA up to 90% across the district, you know, we're trending upwards. Um, Sarah's West Building is looking really good, so keep that up, please. Um, but I just, I want to highlight that, you know, the concentration on attendance makes me optimistic about, you know, all these other initiatives that we've, we've started since August.
Oh, well, I would, um, I was just wondering about high school attendance because like compared to last year, it looks like everybody is trending up except for high school. I just didn't know if there was, if you, Dr. Theo, if you saw like a um, some sort of crazy trend or just some sort of anomaly or what was happening.
Uh, no, we don't, we don't really see like a single indicator uh, by any means uh, other than just individual cases. Um, uh, now it's, as of today, it's at 71%. Um, so it, um, that's, that came up three points from where it was, I think, a week ago. But uh, no single indicator. Um, we're, we have our attendance champions going where we've got 18 staff paired with 96 students. Uh, so it's an attendance initiative and also just a relationship initiative to connect with those kids on a weekly basis. We've got some incentives for the kids and uh, and we're just line by line working with the kids and uh, trying to find a compelling reason for them to come to school each and every day, so.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on the central office attendance and enrollment report? Uh, anything on the special ed? High school? And finally, the middle school?
I have one, one thing, sorry. Don't want to be picking on you, but um, I, as I read it, the first thing, one thing that popped out to me is that the choir concert at the middle school is on the same night as the citywide Christmas parade and Santa arriving. And that's kind of a, a big deal. And it is, especially at my house because I live on the parade route and we always have a bunch of people over and, and, and my granddaughter is in choir. So now we're trying to figure out how we're going to work all this, but anyway.
She has an amazing solo though.
She has a solo. So anyway, is it at 6 o'clock?
No, we are moving it back. Oh, to 6:30 at this time. Um, so they're willing to move and if it needs to move even further, that is.
Well, that probably won't help because the parade starts at 6 and it's.
What time, Mary?
I, I, I don't think, I don't think it's going to matter either. Just keep it the way it is, what you have.
Well, we've already moved it to 6:30.
Oh, okay. Uh, but anyway, uh, that, I just, I know it's hard to schedule things, but you know, I just wish we could have. That's a set day on that parade every year. It's the first Tuesday, Thursday of the month of December. So anyway, if we could kind of get the district calendar to recognize some of those things. Anyway.
Anything else on the middle school?
Yeah, and you know, looking in closer at some of the evaluate data, uh, math continues to, to be a little bit of a, a struggle for us. So we could just maybe talk a little bit, uh, um, more specific action that we're taking there. I know we covered some of it in the, in the APR action report, but if there's just some more detail we could add to the middle school, that'd be appreciated.
Taylor, would you like to speak to what you're doing at the building level?
Right, so our uh, impact teams, you know, are really focusing on, on what we call our hearts. So our vital organs and that. So what they have done is they have taken our heat maps um, along with our individual item specs of our map test and found, you know, where are we finding gaps in student progress um, from year to year even trends. And so they've identified um, across the board, grades five through eight. Um, wrapping on a coordinate plane which starts actually in the fifth grade and then goes all the way through um, our algebra two. So finding how, how do we solidify that? Because it is such a pivotal thing for moving forward in math. So that's something that they are assessing weekly, um, and watching student growth and that. Um, and then equations, so all the way from multi-step equations um, down to order of operations which starts um, in fifth grade and obviously builds all the way up to the highest level math class that we offer in high school. So building that, making sure that our rigor level builds appropriately from each grade level, not leaving those gaps. And so we've adjusted um, some of our curriculum that um, we have looked at in the previous year to make sure that we are incrementally um, addressing each of those needs grade by grade without leaving those gaps anymore weekly. I would love to share that with you.
Me too.
Anything else? Okay, moving on, the consent agenda, uh, please review employment. And other than that, um, I'm going to ask a question. There was something in the board packet, are your questions about a policy being?
Yeah, yeah, that was, I can't read. Like I read the first paragraph and it was so clearly, clearly underneath it, so.
So we don't, we don't have any concerns?
No, no, no concerns, like literally these, these sentence below, so.
That's cool. All right, so does anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda? Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion to.
There's a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
There's a motion and second, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
She, she, you approved, correct?
Yes.
Okay, well. You, you, I say name when I said all those opposed.
Sorry.
So we just want to make sure we get in the act of this council, seven, zero. Okay, uh, in, in accordance with the section 61021 of the revised statutes of Missouri, the R2 Board of Education will be in closed session to discuss, one, legal actions, three, personnel, six, individually identifiable student record, thirteen, individually identifiable personnel records, and fourteen, records which are protected from disclosure by law. I mean, a motion to go in a closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, any more discussion? We'll call Heidi.
Yes.
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 Okay, uh, can y'all get by with a five-minute break?
Yes.
Okay, see you back at 17, uh, excuse yourself.